Okay, good morning, everybody. You hear me all right? If you can find a seat and we call this meeting to order. Do we, now that we are all seated, please stand for the invocation.
Well, good morning. My name is Susan Fanon. I'm a pastor from the Springs Church here in Benita. It's an honor and a blessing to be here with all of you, and we're praying for each and every one of you. Please join me now in prayer. Lord, thank you for today and even for the inauguration of our new president and new leadership at the Capitol. But I pray, Lord, from your presence there to your presence right here now. Heavenly Father, thank you for Benita Springs. That has small-town charm and a big, bright future. I pray for every leader in this city, from the mayor to the city council and to all others in authority. I pray, Lord God, that you would lead justly with godly wisdom, and I pray for their strength and understanding. I also, God, ask for you to protect each and every one of them. Lord, you have chosen each and every one of them and gifted them for their position here on this city council. Let them speak in truth with each other and help them to listen to one another. Bring them together as community leaders in unity. God bless Benita Springs in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. Remain standing. Mike, could you lead us in the Pledge of Leaders?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice as well.
Okay, City Clerk Debbie, please, the roll call. You may be seated. Thank you.
Councilwoman Corumba, present. Councilwoman Purdon?
Here.
Councilwoman Carr?
Here.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Here.
Councilwoman Corey?
Here.
Councilman Gibson?
Present.
Councilman Forbes?
Here.
Okay, approval in a minute of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move along. Move on to Mayor's Welcome. Thank you all for coming. Please fill out a speaker form if you plan on speaking to give me the, give us the, the name, your district. There are district maps over there. And give us your comment, your phone number, and give them to Debbie over here, our City Clerk. Is that too much? Oops, excuse me, thank you. We need to know what the people need. We want to satisfy your needs as a city. And unless we have information from you, we can't, we're not, we're leaders, but we're not God, so. Is that all right? Hello?
You have to either sit down or you...
Okay. I'd like to introduce, I'd like the council people to introduce themselves, starting here with the number six, District Six.
Fred Forbes, City Council, District Six.
Chris Corey, City Council, District Four.
Okay, and Amy?
Amy Corumba, District One.
Jesse Purdon, District Two.
Laura Carr, District Three.
And over there is Mike Gibson, District...
Five.
Five. I'm Rick Steinmeier, your mayor. I'm the last resort. If you can't get what you need from these six people, then you call me. And my phone number, home phone, is 992-3018. Okay, now at this time, we'd like public comment. Come to the microphone, identify yourself, and give us a comment. Thank you.
Well, I can hear you, but I'm not sure anybody else can.
Better.
No feedback. Good morning, Mayor, council members.
Good morning.
I'm sorry?
Good morning.
Good morning. For the record, Dwight Esmond, Paradise Road area. I want to comment on the agenda item regarding the 11-lot food truck park. If I read the agenda correctly, and I may not be, then it seems like the development agreement would allow the park to stay open until 11:30 every night. I think liquor in late hours will almost certainly lead to noise and trouble. Celebration Park in Naples closes at 9:00 p.m., except on Friday and Saturday nights when they stay open until 10:00 p.m. In the original proposal, the request to stay open was to let traffic clear from any event at Riverside Park. Perhaps an exception to earlier hours could be made when there is an event, a late event at the park. But I'm also concerned that if the council approves 11:30 p.m. closing time and there are problems that are created by that late hour, then the city will have a hard time mandating an earlier closing hour and might even be sued. And I also can't seem to determine if the project is American with Disabilities Act, ADA compliant. Thank you, have a good day.
Thank you. Anybody else, please come forward? Seeing none, we go to the staff report, Consent Agenda.
No zoning.
Item eight.
We have zoning.
Zoning and land use.
We have one zoning item first.
We have zoning.
And this is a zoning resolution regarding...
Okay, I'm sorry, number eight again.
No problem. Mary Sizo is going to go ahead and introduce the item.
Good morning, Mary Sizo, Community Development Staff. This is a request for additional signage for the new Aspen Dental location at 28120 South TME Trail. In your packet, you will see the staff report and staff's recommendations. I can go through a presentation if you'd like, or we can address questions, or if the applicant is here, we can allow them to present. That counts as pleasure.
What is the legal limit of signs? How many signs are they legally allowed to have?
On a through lot in Benita Springs, they are permitted two signs. They are requesting four.
Is the applicant here to present?
Is the applicant here?
There does not appear to be anyone from the applicant. The sign contractor had shown up at the zoning board level at this time. If you'd like Ms. Sizo to go through with the rest of the presentation, otherwise you can open up to a public comment and then take action.
I'll make a motion to deny.
Second.
Yeah, second. So can we call, can we call for a vote?
You need to have, open up to public comment.
Have public comment on this item. Seeing none, can we call for a vote?
May I suggest that the staff at least summarize their recommendation and what came out of the zoning board, just mention the conclusions that were in, it's in the report, but for the public.
Yes, absolutely.
And then I would like to have a comment.
Okay.
I'd like to have a vote. To deny is on the floor. We call, Debbie, call roll.
Councilwoman Corumba?
What, I'm sorry, is it if we say yes, it means we're denying it? Just clarify.
We're not having a discussion? There's no comment, no presentation? You just want to have a vote? So we're moving to...
That was a vote, it was a, a motion and a second on the floor, young lady.
We're now into discussion.
And when I were asking, all right, discussion, okay.
All right, but I had proposed as part of the discussion that's open to the council that the staff at least give us a one-line statement of what their recommendation is for this application, plus what the zoning board said. And I believe Councilwoman Carr had asked to make a comment, which I think I would like to hear.
And I'll remove my second if that makes it easier to discuss.
No, discussion comes after the second. That's proper.
Okay.
That's how it's used.
Okay, Laura, would you like to...
No, Amy would like to go.
Amy?
So the required criteria for a finding of a variance would be, it is the minimum request, and it is a hardship, and that hardship cannot be self-imposed. They are requesting additional signage beyond what we can find to be the minimum, as they are allowed additional signage by right as a ground sign off of Beaumont Road, and they have not requested that. In addition, we do not see this to be a hardship simply because they complied with the code. Our code specifically says if you comply with the code, that is not a hardship in and of itself, and we find failure to satisfy the hardship requirement. Zoning board also found that same finding, that there is lack of a hardship in this case.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm familiar with where they're building, they're building. It's on the corner of 41 and Benita Beach Road, right next to Walgreens. And I went to the site, I visited it, I'm looking at it. And what they want to do is put on their own building their sign, so that coming from the south, you see where they are. You do have to make a U-turn, so you have to get into the lane, and it can be tricky to get over there. So, and then they want to put another sign, again, on their building. And the staff's concern was that they also can ask for another sign on Beaumont. Well, who cares? I mean, Beaumont, at that point, you look across the street, I think where they want to put the sign is like a utility center, a little tiny, you know, something that FPL owns or something. So it's not that big a deal, and if that's what they want to do, okay. But if they have a sign on their building, they're going to maintain it much better than they are the sign on Beaumont, I think. And it's their money, if they want to put extra signage on their building, I think they should have the right to do it. And it doesn't in any way affect the neighborhood, it doesn't affect safety. And, and the board, the zoning board's issue was that, well, it won't affect their income. How do they know that? I mean, it just doesn't make any sense that we would deny. I mean, it was the same issue that NCH had when the city denied them signage to the south side of the building. Well, you drive right by it if you don't know it's there. So you need the signage so that you, especially at this point where you have to make a U-turn to get into that section if you're coming from the north. And it's on their building, it is to code, and even the staff said it's to code, but maybe they'll ask for more signage. So say you can get this, but no more signage on Beaumont would be my suggestion.
Call the question.
I'd like to comment. Laura, there are rules and regulations that were...
Mr. Mayor, there's been a, there's been a motion to call the question.
Okay.
If...
Okay, fine, let's vote.
If there's no, if there's no objection, then I would, I would ask the clerk to call the roll.
Okay, let's vote.
Councilwoman Corumba?
I vote to deny.
Councilwoman Purdon?
I vote to deny.
Councilwoman Carr?
Approve.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Approve what? The motion was to deny. You approved the denial, Laura?
She's voting against the motion.
Okay, the motion is to deny, and I vote to, to deny.
Councilwoman Corey?
I vote to deny.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Thank you.
Passes four-three. It's a four-three. It's an aye.
Okay, now we move on to Staff Counsel Consent Agenda.
Move the, move all items.
Move all, and thank you.
Second, but I'd like just to comment on C, but to approve everything.
Well, you pull it if you want to comment on it, don't you?
No, you could comment after if you, if you're, if you want to approve it.
It saves a roll call vote.
Councilwoman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Okay.
Well, my question on C is, it's a pretty onerous agreement. You guys have done it before. Who's responsible to making all those reports to make sure it's timely? Like, it's Article One, if you, I mean, I wouldn't even read it because it's just, but you have to, all projects funded from the Department of Housing and Urban Development (plud), homeless assistance grants must be actively participated and coordinated and reported. Who has to do that?
We, we, it depends on how the money is spent, but primarily Ellie coordinates that with our finance department. And a lot of the, probably the more onerous reporting that you're seeing there is really done by the county, because the county receives the grant and we're sub-recipient. But Ellie McEwen out of our, my department handles the nuances.
Additionally, without the support of Lee County on this, we don't have the additional staff that's certified in the procurement of those. So that is what gives us the ability through the agreement to have that resource.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Well, now we have, I asked Amy Corumba to come forward and present to her, I call them, Benita's, Betsy Ross's. And please, please come forward to the microphone.
I'm going to use this microphone if you don't mind, and then I'll get up and I'll call everybody up at one time.
All right, very good.
And I want to thank the mayor for allowing me to make this presentation, and I feel that I was really, I was privileged to be part of this fantastic group of citizens who came forward and tried to help a section of our city that was hard hit by COVID. And there was an effort that started at Hope, excuse me, at Hope Church, and then just sheared off to the rest of the community from that. So what we did was call on our citizens from the various communities to come and do mask making, and I believe our number, and I think Sheila will come up here, I hope, and tell us the actual number, was more than 10,000 masks that were made in a very short period of time. So I'd like to call up Sheila Morales, who, who, who came out of, I'm sorry, Hope Lutheran Church and started this program, and Sherry Mink from Hunter's Ridge, Paula Corey, if she's here, from Benita Bay, Linda Schwartz from Cedar Ridge, Ann Grindell from Love Inc. and At Large, and I was privileged to do the liaison out of Pelican Landing. So I'm going to come up and join you. Sure. We identified that there was a need in Benita Springs and that we had a high incidence of COVID cases compared to other areas of Lee County. And we had previously, at Hope Lutheran Church, made a number of masks for assisted living and memory care units. So we just called on the people again to sew masks and so that we could provide every individual with at least two handmade masks that they could rotate and clean and be safe by having them. We identified areas, Pueblo Benito, there's 135 families, we provided masks for all of them, New Horizons After School Program, Salvation Army, Cafe of Life, all of the schools, Benita Middle, Benita Elementary, Benita High School, and just enlisted women and a couple men in the community to make over 10,000 masks. We originally were, were going for 5,000, and we, we were able to get double that. And it was just very, it was wonderful. Amy supported us in the effort and helped coordinate in her neighborhood, and it was just a beautiful thing to see everybody work hard to, to make it happen. So we were privileged to do that. I want to, on behalf of the city, I want to thank all, the whole effort that was done. And, and I don't know if you had the same experience that I had, but in Pelican Landing, I think we had over 25 sewers, and I called them my sewing angels. And in my group, I gave them a little token after we finished, and I have some leftover that I'd like to give to you for my sewing angels. And plus, we have our, I think I was supposed to read something. And, and the city also sent thank you notes to everyone that participated. So we're just honoring the liaisons at this time, but thank you. We can't thank you for enough, and hopefully we won't need you as drastically as we did in the past. I know. Okay, we're on call. Oh, I guess we're supposed to take our pictures. Is that what we're doing? Antonio said we have to do, oh, you're going to take our picture. Okay.
There's nothing more important than your health, and that's the most important thing for us as, as representatives of the city, to maintain your health and welfare. Thank you very much. Okay, now the staff is going to present us with the code enforcement statistics. Do we have Tony Backhurst here, please?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As Council previously requested us to provide regularly, regular updates on our code enforcement activities and services and procedures to keep the public informed of the process. I'd like Tony Backhurst to provide an update. Additionally, we're going to use this opportunity to give a brief update on our emergency management preparedness for the upcoming storm season and starting to look at some additional programs to, to implement in this season.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor and Council. For the record, Tony Backhurst from Neighborhood Services.
Good morning, Tony.
I'm going to, going to run through a PowerPoint here, just with some stats, and also, as Okay, so we've got five main areas of responsibility that we deal with at Neighborhood Services. Code enforcement is one of them, permitting, licensing, emergency management, and an administrative component as well. In our emergency management, preparation and oversight is obviously a major component of that, and we have to maintain currency and consistency with all state and FEMA guidelines. So we're always throughout the year maintaining through updates with FEMA that everything that we're doing here within the city is in alignment with that. This past year has obviously shown that emergencies here in, in our city are not just related to hurricanes. We've gone through COVID, and the communication and liaison with not just Lee County EOC, but our partner agencies as well, with Sheriff's Department, Fire Department, Solid Waste, all of these, this is an ongoing year-round effort. Outreach and education also, which is very, very big throughout the year that we do this, and Laura will, will segue into Laura, showing some of the communication at the end of this stuff. Enforcement, we had an emergency order last year as well, which was related to a water shortage. We worked in conjunction with South Florida Water Management and with our residents to ensure that everything that was being done should be done to conserve the water within the city. And throughout even this year, we had a lot of named hurricanes. We were fairly fortunate, but we did have a lot of rain events, and the city is always monitoring Keel Canal as well as the USG Imperial River water levels as well, so we can keep a constant eye on things in preparation. Neighborhood Services, we divide it up into four areas. There's, there's one director, which is myself, one supervisor, which is Chris Campbell, who's here today. We have two admin staff who are holding the fort down right now, which is Peggy Douglas and Alana Henry. And then we have our four inspectors who are all assigned an individual zone. Zone one, which is the northwest area, is Jason Albert, who's here. Zone two, which is the northeast, is Angel Cruz.
Can you read, yeah, okay.
Zone three, which is southwest and, and the beach area, is Chuck Tomlinson on the end. And zone four is Mike Guerrero, who covers the southeast area and also parts of, one area of Benita Beach Road. So it's kind of, it's kind of small to read there, but the code enforcement component, we deal with a whole slew of different activities that many of you are probably familiar with. We deal with property maintenance issues, dilapidated properties, unpermitted work, unlicensed contractors, stormwater conveyance issues on private property. We enforce development standards, zoning standards. We deal with exotic invasive vegetation control, vacant lot maintenance, parking complaints, and we liaise with other agencies, again, with the Sheriff's Department and other necessary agencies. We deal with signs, the infamous snipe signs that appear like mushrooms throughout the city constantly, and trash and debris as well. So I put up two, two years' worth of statistics just to, to compare, to show the consistency of calls. We're dealing with, in 2020, even it was a very unusual year, we were just over 13,800 response activities that our inspectors did respond to, which is around 30 more than 2019. So still is fairly consistent, and even going back, and I wasn't going to put years prior to that, but it's, it's kind of following the same pattern. Our response time, when we have a, a call come in on something, our goal is to get there within three working days. And on our response, we've, we've, we've met more than the 90%, which is kind of the departmental standard. We've actually managed to get 98% of our complaints responded to within the three And proactive, the goal that we set is that 80% of our activities are proactive, and we've, we've managed to exceed that throughout the year, and we've managed a 95% average. And that is self-initiated through our investigators, inspectors going out and looking at this, this stuff. So they're, they're performing at a pretty high level. And we're just going to cover off as quickly and painlessly as we can, due process. When we deal with, we have informal cases and formal cases. The informal cases are the, you know, the best-case scenario where we see an incident, see an issue, go out, speak with the, the property owner, they rectify it. Within days, sometimes days or weeks, the issue is corrected. When it goes beyond that, we are obligated under state statute to give people reasonable time to comply, and if they don't, we have to notice them correctly. So our best-case scenarios, which are the majority of the cases we do deal with here, we, we do manage to obtain a high level of compliance. The complex cases, which is, leads to involuntary compliance, we'll open up a case, and it's going to proceed down where we have to send out certified mail, we have to follow the statutory requirements on that, and then we have to provide notice prior to a hearing. So that's the, kind of the way the two set up. Our compliance for 2020 is explained somewhat by this chart, which again is hard to read, it's kind of off in the distance. But you can see the initial inspection then ends in subsequent re-inspections. But then when it goes to a compliance inspection, there's a huge drop-off. So we are obtaining a large amount of compliance in that reinspection phase. We give people time to correct the issue, and they invariably do correct the issue. If it does need to go to a formal hearing, then it's going to get, we'll have a compliance inspection, then we're going to have a HECs inspection. We refer to our HECs as, our hearings as HECs, Hearing Examiner. And we hold them every second month. We've increased that in the last year to every second month. And our formal hearing process is, if there is no progress, then we will pursue this. Okay? And then the notice of hearing, people need 10 days prior to that, they go there, and then there will be, the Hearing Examiner will listen to the case, the facts, and issue, and will render a judgment and time to comply. We will then conduct that hearing reinspection, and if we don't, do not actually obtain compliance, then it can... And if we do not actually obtain compliance, then it can end up in a fine and a subsequent lien on the property. Now, our compliance statistics, when you look for the year, we're absolutely, it's 99%. We only actually ended up with six cases out of nine and a half thousand, I believe it was, ended up at that stage. So the compliance we obtained within the community is very high and we do have a good working relationship with the community. And stormwater, which, you know, stormwater conveyance on private property is a hot hurricane season. We work on this year-round. And we worked on 55 stormwater code cases throughout 2020. It resulted in over 250 inspections. These things are lengthy and process. It costs a lot of money for people to rectify these situations. And 250 inspections, but we ended up with a 98% voluntary compliance as a result of that. And there's some before and after pictures on this. And as you can see, the invasive removal, excess vegetation that allow the conveyances to operate as they were probably intended to operate at. And there's some pretty stark differences throughout the city. And the emergency management prep for 2020, has been on, for 2021, I should say, has been ongoing. And invariably, we will do another presentation in Maytime prior to hurricane season, but just wanted to make sure we're getting as much information to you prior to that meeting. We're going to be reviewing our EOP, our Emergency Operations Plan. We're going to make sure everything is in conjunction and in alliance with our partners. We've worked on the MITAP, which is the Multi-Year Training Exercise Program in preparation. The city staff have also worked in the Community System Rating Flood, where we've done, I worked alongside city staff and we actually engaged in a virtual preparation that we did flood recognition, emergency warning, dissemination, and critical facilities planning, which was very worthwhile. The city has engaged with that with all of the other partners within Lee County. We're also, prior to the next meeting, we're going to continue our outreach to the other agencies and work with them for the presentation so that Mayor and Council do have a good idea of the preparations. We do ongoing equipment maintenance and we also are working ongoing preparation, identification for not just debris management sites, but also point of distribution sites within the city in preparation for the hurricane season. This is, every year we have to do that. We have to get approval through FDEP to utilize these. So we're ongoing getting that. Everything will be prepared as it has been the last few years. And outreach and education programs, which I would, if you don't have any questions, would segue into Laura.
And Mayor and Council, as this time, I'd like Laura Taylor, Communications Director, come forward. She's going to discuss our preliminary activities and outreach to prepare for this hurricane season as well as look at some additional programs that might be available to us.
Good morning, Laura.
Good morning, Laura Taylor, Communications Director. So we're going to be recapping a little bit of what we talked to you about a few months ago when we were at the church, but we thought it was important for our new councillor, or my new mayor, as well as to remind the community to start to sign up and subscribe to things that they can to connect for the Emergency Operations Center. So the city does work with FEMA. Okay, we do the FEMA Public Information Guidance Plan. The public education is the process of making the public aware of risks and how they can prepare for all hazards in advance. Prior to an incident, the city shares information to educate the public about local hazards, prevention, family preparedness, and response level activities. Upon declaration of a state of emergency by either the county or the state, the city will implement the Crisis Communication Plan and select a spokesperson. The city shall operate as a support agency to the overall emergency management efforts of the EOC. So we'll be sharing coordinated messaging from the Emergency Operations Center on all of our city platforms. So one of the things residents can do now is that they can register for the Alert Lee, which is a emergency notification system that allows registered users to receive telephone, text, and email alerts related to emergencies. They can go to www alertlee.com to register now. The City of Benita Springs also has a free app that is available on the Apple Store or the Play Store, depending what type of phone you have. That will connect residents with city news, social media sites, websites, city calendar, and more. So we encourage you, if you haven't done that, to go ahead and download that free app. Lee prepares, also has, Lee County also has a Lee prepares mobile app, and that app is also free and you can download it either the Apple Store or the Google Play Store. This app will give you shelter information, give you information after the disaster, as well as help you find out if you live in a flood zone. So it's very, you know, a good tool to go ahead and sign up for as soon as possible before hurricane season. The city also has, on our website, the ability for residents to subscribe to receive information per your district. That's our app. Get back over here. Okay, per your district. So this is what the website will look like. And let's say that you're, you live in District One, you want to find out information solely about your district. You can go onto our city website and hit the subscribe button and that will have you subscribe to receive district-specific news. If you're not sure what district you live in, you can also access an interactive map that we have on the city website. You type in your address and it will tell you what district you live in and who your councilperson is. So those are just some great tools that we have on the website to help out as well.
Question?
Sure.
Would that have information on when vaccinations for COVID are going to be given out and where?
So currently, we're not doing that in our city right now, but we are sharing information from the county, that the county's putting out on all city platforms. So we have it posted on our website, we have it on our COVID resource page, and we're sharing that information on our social media as well, as we get it from the county.
So do notify me now, app versus go to my district? If they want to find out?
Sure, you could subscribe to eBlast system. You could sign up on the city, you know, friend us on Facebook. You could join us for Nextdoor. And what we've done is we'll put out information, encourage you to go to the county page to get the most updated, because that information is changing so often. They're sending out releases just about every other day, if not every day, from what I've seen so far.
And the county page, do you know offhand?
Let me see. I know it's the Lee County.
By www lee county.org?
Yeah, you can go to lee county.org and you'll be able to find that page. Or you can go to our homepage, www cityofbenitasprings.org. And on our news section, or there's a small icon that says COVID dashboard, you can click that and you'll find that information. And it connects you to a variety of resources. So it'll have the Lee County page, it'll have the state page, it'll have Lee County Sheriff's Office, and the fire page. So you can get to all of those things in one spot on our dashboard.
Oh, perfect. Thank you.
No problem.
Can you also call 211?
You can. And they also have a new number out as well for vaccination information, and we have that information posted on our website. It's the state's vendor that they chose for that, from what I understand. It's a, I think, a 1-880 or 1-800 number that you can call for just asking questions about the process from the county.
But 211 has all the information, the current information?
Yes.
On your phone?
Mm-hmm.
211. Thank you.
No problem. Okay, and then last, let's see if I can get it back up. Okay. So when we take the emergency operation information from our, from the county, we will share it, like I said, on various platforms, Facebook, Twitter, Nextdoor, Channel 98. We also share it on our city website. We do work with the media to do press conferences, we send out press releases. And we are also encouraging our residents now to go to our website to make sure they signed up for our eBlast system, city documents, so that they can get this information. And then, again, that's information that the county will generate as emergency operations, and we will support that information and coordinate with them to share that with our residents. And that's all we have for you today on that. Do you have any questions for me?
Thank you.
Actually, I'm sorry, let me tell you one last thing. I know Tony did start about, talking to you about the Clear and Cut, or Clean and Cut program, and we are in the early stages of exploring that. What that is, is it encourages residents to go ahead and make sure that they clean out any, you know, extra garbage from their homes in preparation for hurricane season. One of the ways that we will try to implement this year is to just make sure that we're pushing that information out, you know, a couple of months prior to hurricane season. Please make sure you're checking out your garage, make sure you're getting all this information, or all this trash out and cleaned up so that you don't have to add that to the debris and the cleanup afterwards. So that's one thing we're still exploring. We do think it will go a little further, maybe next year, but this year it'll be more of an educational aspect. I don't know if Arlene wants to add to that a little bit.
One of the programs we've been looking at is actually done in Boca Raton, and it actually calls Cut and Clear. What it does is, a couple of months prior to hurricane season, it asks residents to clear away their white goods, look around the home, anything that could be, something that could be projectile, to go ahead and get that trash going out early. Look for low-lying limbs, loose branches, start clearing out your property. And then they work with their local haulers to provide some extra weekend pickup dates so that folks get a chance, who are cleaning up their house on the weekends, to do that. So we have done some preliminary outreach with our new carrier, which is going to be Waste Management, is taking ownership of advanced disposal and looking at what opportunities we might have in the future for sponsorships for that. It will probably not be in time for this year, but this is something we like to look to bring in place for next year. And if it becomes sort of adopted into an event-type situation of a cleanup day, that might be something we look at in the future.
Is Waste Management the owner of advanced disposal? Is advanced disposal going to stay the way they are, but they're owned by Waste Management? Is that?
I understand that Waste Management now oversees advanced disposal, but I believe all the contracts with Lee County are still in the name of advanced disposal, but there's a transition happening there.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to make a comment. I would also. I just want to say I extend my appreciation to Code Enforcement. I think this is one of our departments that works sort of, was, it's very open to the public, but not so much widely known, the effort that you make to keep our city as beautiful as it is. I think you have one of the hardest jobs, and I really think you're a hero, because you, you know, when you interact with people where you're trying to tell them that they're not doing the right thing, that's always a difficult situation. And I appreciate the hard effort that you do day in and day out. Your statistics are remarkable. So I want to just offer my thank you from the city to you and keep up the good work. And I don't know how you could get any better, but try. Thank you.
I'd also like to add, not only do you guys do a great job statistically, but as Amy alluded to, you're very good with the people. And when you're not, we hear about it. I got a really nice one, actually, over the last week, and it wasn't actually you guys. Everybody who's doing work in the city is you guys, if you guys didn't know that. But you all do a very great job. And Tony, one of the things I like most about you, honestly, I tell you about an issue and you tackle it, you take care of the entire thing, you wrap it up, and then you let me know that everything's done at the end. And you always, you always close the loop. That's really above and beyond, and that's kind of, it's kind of what you led me to expect now, but I appreciate it, because that's not the norm for a lot of folks. So I appreciate that. Obviously, that transcends over into the folks under you, because that's why their statistics are the way that they are. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yes, Tony, could you come to the microphone?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I said I would like to make a comment. Would that be okay?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you.
Tell me you want to make a comment before you start commenting. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Well, Amy sort of summed it up, and then Jesse echoed in, which is wonderful. But what people don't know is you guys will reschedule your time. Like, you'll come out at 2:00 in the morning, if that's the issue. And it is amazing, the extent you go, that people don't know about. So it's much appreciated, and you do get compliance and you get right on it. And the litter is impossible to keep clear. I mean, it's amazing, you go in, well, Mr. Mayor could talk about that. You clear it up, and then the next day, you're like, golly, that wasn't there yesterday! It's like a weed. But thank you all. Thank you all. And Laura, you and your team always do a fabulous job. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Laura. Anybody else want to comment?
Yeah, let me.
Yeah, go ahead.
I want to especially thank Tony and Code Enforcement and Arlene for getting involved in the efforts to clean up the longitude blue fence downtown. And we've got a lot of focus on what's going on downtown and improving the appearance of downtown. It was getting to the point where that blue fence thing and the property behind it was becoming an eyesore. And it's taken some time, but I think we've got a solution in place, and I appreciate all your efforts in terms of trying to get that area cleaned up. That's it.
Okay, Tony, could you come to the microphone, please? You mentioned trash. Is that trash on private property, or is it on the roadside?
We'll deal with both. Primarily, we're dealing with private property, but we've gone out and seen, like, when the inspectors are out, if they do see there's a large amount of trash, they will pick it up. We've gone along Pennsylvania and picked it up when it's been highlighted that there's a lot of trash blowing around.
I really want to have a clean, clean neighborhood, a safe, a clean place is usually a safe place. And there's nothing more important to me to protect our citizens, to help them be safe. And the road, the road right away is a vague area, it's public property, but you're not allowed to use it. You put these, all these signs in, I'm a stickler on signs. You drive down the road and there's 20 signs, and you kind of read them and drive your car at the same time, but it's not, it's not safe. Now, are you in charge of enforcing the permitting, construction, you know, remodeling and whether they got a permit or not? Is that part of your racket?
No, that would be community development handled the permitting. However, if there's unpermitted work that's going on, we would get involved at that point from an enforcement component. But the permitting for construction would be handled through community development.
Is there any chance that you, if a small crew, is there any chance of volunteers working with you? Is that an illegal problem, or is it possible? I know they have, adopted, Lee County has adopter road programs where they pick up trash along their roads.
There is an existing program where roads can be adopted, areas can be adopted. And we haven't had an awful lot of interest in that, but there is currently.
Through the city?
Through the city, yes.
Okay, I didn't realize that. That works good. I've been involved with, for many, many years, on Hickory Boulevard. And there's many, many roads. I thought it was just Lee County, but it is available through the city on city roads?
Yeah, we do have an adopter road program, yes.
Okay, very good. And thank you so much.
Thank you.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Tony, the mayor is correct about the trash and that being a top priority, but to me, another priority, and it's really relegated to certain areas of the city, but where do you, well, I received a photograph from somebody showing all these cars parked. The topic of the photo was fences, but the real topic to me was just, it was just wall-to-wall cars parked in yards and everything else. That's probably one of your second or third biggest problems?
It is a problem. I'd be careful of how I would rank it, but excess cars usually is indicative of other issues. You know, you can have excess amount of cars for a party, that can be one thing. But you can also have overcrowding and the intent, I guess originally, behind the ordinance with the unregistered vehicles and the parking regulations was to prevent overcrowding in residences. Along with that, can come trash and a whole variety of other things. It is something like, you can see on our response, we get to stuff as quickly as we can. We do prioritize our calls as well. So if we've got something that we think is far deeper, we will obviously respond to that as quickly as we possibly can.
One thing I want to compliment you all on, I know from time to time when I leave the house coming downtown, I'll see something that's on I-7, Benita Beach Road or other roads. roads. And if I call in to someone in the city, I think within usually a day, that piece item that's laying in the roadway, which is not, it's trash, but it's hard trash, where if a car hit, they could have a blowout or have a dent in their car. And you all, you all seem to get it picked up real quick. So I want to compliment you on that.
Thank you.
Oh, by the way, Tony, excuse me. Are you still doing apartment rental inspections? What's that stage of that?
That's suspended. We're going in on empty apartments, but if they are occupied, we are not. That's suspended. The rental program is still working. We're just not able to do the inspections on occupied. So at some point, when that is, when we do move forward and when things alter within, within our society with the spread, we're going to have to play catch-up with the, with the rental inspections.
Because that inspection would, would address the excess cars and the excess population inside the apartment. Has that been taken away from us by the state?
I can't comment whether it's been taken away. We're still doing exterior. We can do exterior inspections, but just the interior ones were suspended through, through the COVID issue.
Because of the COVID. Okay, thank you, Tony. Okay, moving right along. Where are we at here? Laura Carr, mural at City Hall.
Yes, fellow councilperson.
What is your item here, dear?
Well, I must thank Carly very much for putting this together for me. But as Jesse pointed out, the, the City Hall renovations is going well, and it's amazing. It looks great. And I just thought we could update the mural that's there. Courtney Kavanaugh, Kavanaugh, I believe, did the original. And I love it. It's fabulous. It's, you know, it reminds me of me in my youth, you know, and in my little quaint town up north. But I just thought we could update it. Because when I went to the Fourth of July with friends, and even Memorial Day with different friends, they both commented to me that they didn't realize there were so many young people downtown and families. And I'm like, oh, absolutely! That's what vibes down there. And I just think the mural could be just more. And, you know, just continue with country, community, and family. And I would love it if arts in public places would consider it. And if you guys want to just keep the same one, I'm okay with that, too.
I'd like to speak to that, please.
And I would, too.
Yes.
I attended an Art in Public Places meeting yesterday, and I did discuss the notion with them. And they were kind enough to give me a lot of history on that particular art, those particular art pieces. And it was commissioned by the city in conjunction with the Art in Public, the Art League and two members of the Benita Springs Historic Society. The intent of that was to reflect on the history of Benita. And they would be very happy to meet with any of the council people at one of their meetings to sort of give their points of view. They were, I would say that they were very, they're still open to discussion, but they were very supportive of this mural indicating that the artist is, has a national reputation for presenting murals of historic importance. And it comes from historic photos. That's how she picks, or she uses the theme to portray. And those entities that participated in that in 2005 decided that they wanted to have a historical record. So, I mean, that's, that's the history there. It doesn't mean that we can't change it. But I think that if I read their discussion correctly, they would be supportive of maintaining it. And if we wanted to have another, there are opportunities for other murals at other places. But again, they encourage and welcome any council people to come to the next meeting and talk about it, if that's what they choose to, to do.
We'll notify Derek, but it is in the Lyles Motel, and it would be really lovely there.
Excuse me?
I didn't hear. What did she say?
Who's got the floor here? Amy?
Well, all I'm saying is that, I'm just reporting what came out of the discussion at the Art in Public Places meeting. And they definitely would have, if the, if the council wants to go forward with that, they want some time to consider it. But that was what was the discussion yesterday.
Okay. Jesse, go ahead.
Yes, sir. I actually am with Laura on this one. I, I like it. But at the same time, you know, I think a facelift is appropriate when we're giving a whole facelift to City Hall. You know, even comparable city halls to us, you know, Naples is a great example. The mural behind them is absolutely beautiful. I don't know if you've been in that building. But I think we could, honestly, I think we could do something that, you know, is tasteful. We can tie in the historical aspects and other components. But that's a big, it's a big one, you know? I mean, people are going to look at that all the time. We're going to look at it all the time. You know, things for the sacred tradition are not always the best way to go forward. We can still keep it in the Lyles Hotel, but, you know, maybe we entertain what it might potentially look like and see if we have some consensus. You know, if we can't get consensus, keep it the way it was. But I think, you know, kind of like an RFP, there's really nothing to lose by looking at what potential options might be. So again, I'm with Laura on this, and thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I really like the one that we have now. I think it's a good anchor for our past, our small-town past. I would be open to looking at other options, but it would be very hard for me to choose something else over. It would have to be absolutely spectacular, because I love the one that's up there now. Thanks.
Anybody else? Fred?
Yeah, just briefly. I, I like the idea of maybe developing something that kind of updates, but I think it should not be on that mural. Put a, maybe a smaller mural on that wall. Maybe take some other areas and other buildings we have and put big murals with a fresh thought on it. Like this wall of this rec center. There's all kinds of places that you could put a nice mural, and it would probably see, the public, more public would see it in person. Now, a lot of people see it on TV in the City Hall. That's my thoughts.
Anybody else? I prefer to, the way this country has gone last summer with tearing down all our statues and histories, I prefer to keep the history so we know where we were and where we're going. Now, in City Hall, we also have two side walls that could possibly be used as for a modern mural. But I prefer to keep the current mural that we have. The elementary school is 100 years old today, 1921. The city's 21 years old today. And look at us now. We had nothing 21 years ago, and now look at us now. So we've come a long way, but I prefer to, we can look at this, as I say, as Fred says, we can put some other mural some other place. I just want to keep the history so we know where we were and now we know where we're going. Benita's unique in many ways. And so that's my opinion. What do we need to do with this?
Mayor, mayor?
Yes.
Mayor, may I, I agree with what you said, first of all. But may I suggest that I, the next meeting, which I think is February, I don't know what the date is, but I will get it to you.
The third, I think.
The third?
Oh, that's our, that's our meeting.
No, no.
February 3rd is our workshop.
The next, the next Art in Public Places meeting, meeting, I will ask them to offer some suggestions for a significant piece of art, mural, in some significant place that would reflect the new Benita, where we're going, you know, the big, bright future. But I think that we should maintain the history that is shown there and be that on the, you know, we do have historic photographs that we've used on the side walls. Maybe we might want to replace that with something else that's more forward-thinking. But why don't I bring back as an, as an item to the Art in Public Places, their thoughts on how we can show where we're going and not forget where we've been. And then if anybody wants to come and talk, like, if you would like to come and participate, everybody's welcome to do that, anybody.
Right. But I believe, Derek, we'd have to notice it if more than one.
Correct.
That's what I was saying, Mr. Mayor, that I'll let Derek know that I'll be attending the Art in Public Places.
And we have had a little problem getting forums, so that, even the date that we have set, which I can look up while.
No, I know, yeah.
We might have to change it. You have to be flexible. I just wrote it in. I'll tell you in a minute.
Okay.
But thank you.
Yes. Amy, what, we don't know when the City Hall is going to be.
Correct.
Usable, let's say. So I think we're a little bit premature, but we can keep working on this, and we'll get some input and see where we're going from this. Thank you. Any else?
And the date is the ninth so far, February 9th for the Art in Public Places meeting.
Okay.
So far.
We will, we will notice that meeting, that more than one member of council may attend.
Okay.
But we see each other on the 3rd.
Okay, Laura, we move on? Moving on?
Okay, Mr. Mayor, the next item is a first reading of the following ordinance, an ordinance of the city of Benita Springs authorizing the sale of real property known as the Levin Lot, the old 41 downtown, to Rooftop at Riverside LLC and providing for an effective date.
Move to second reading.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilwoman Cory?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilwoman Purdy?
Aye.
And thank you, Magnus family.
Yeah.
Okay, the next, the next item is the first in a series of items. And what I'll do is I'll, maybe I'll step back just a little bit and give you some context. So following up on the RFP for the old 41 downtown lots, you move forward to accept the proposal brought by Jim and Chris Magnus for Rooftop at Riverside. The letter of intent, which was presented to the council back in October, you approved that. The terms of that have been drafted into the purchase and sale agreement that is before you today. That provides for a 15-month window for getting entitlements secured on the property, which includes a special exception. The special exception, the ordinance, second reading of the ordinance you heard here today, which is required by our charter, and the development agreement would specify some of the more particulars to the actual development and use of the project, will all come back at the same hearing with that special exception, so that everything sort of comes more and more into the focus as we move forward. But understand today, the final adoption of the ordinance that was before you, the signing of the development agreement, and the special exception are all preconditions to the closing of the property. So what, what this does is basically puts us on that path to go forward. The outline, the draft of the special, of the development agreement is before you. It includes in it an exhibit, which are the requested conditions for the special exception. I would say that if you have concerns or questions about any, any of this that you've read, now's the time to bring it, so that we are, we are still moving forward on this project. And with that, I'll ask either Jim or Chris to say a few words if they'd like to. But really, this is, this is the time to discuss any, any further clarifications or questions you may have.
Could you clarify the point that was made by Dwight Easeman in regard to the, the hours? That is not included in the development agreement, is it? That's something that would be decided later? Is that correct?
It, it could be something that's designed later, but what I would prefer is that we clarify some of those issues now, if you're going to be discussing them. So the way the special, special exception criteria and exhibit fee to the development agreement are listed out, is they have listed the hours of operation for the project, which is the food truck park, may extend to 11:30 PM. Now, that may include operations such as the closing down of facilities and things like that in the RFP. But if, if your desire is to restrict that, what I would recommend is in a discussion with the Magnuses, putting a minimum for the open to the public operations, and then we can deal with the other issues in the special exception. But I would not want to see this go all the way to the time of special exception and trying to renegotiate issues that we could have discussed today.
Well, I'm not in favor of having 11:30 every single day, but I don't know what to suggest.
Well, why don't we, why don't we ask the Magnuses to discuss what 11:30 means in their minds, so we can get to a meeting of the minds? Is it actual operations?
Right.
Of the facility, including shutdown? Or is it open to the public and consumption of on-premises at 11:30? Those are two different questions.
Hello, council.
Hi.
Thank you very much, and mayor. Thank you very much for having us here, as well as the city staff and community development. As a, as a general statement, John with Community Development and Derek and Arlene, everyone has been very, very helpful and very, very supportive in, in, in working with us to get this project completed. And we sincerely appreciate that. I wanted to address the, the hours. We would currently like to have the hours available until 11:30. Our feeling is that, especially when there's events that are in, in, many of the people will be, rather than everybody rushing to their cars and being in a line for a long time, some people may want to come over and, and get a bite to eat and, and possibly a drink before they leave. And so that's why we felt that the 11:30 was a reasonable time. We may find that if business isn't there, that we will not stay open that late. But we would like to have that opportunity. We have done all of our projections. We're spending, you know, over $3 million on this project. We've done all of our projections based on being able to stay open until 11:30.
Would you mind if we, if you just had, I don't know what I'm suggesting, but you had, we had a provision that if there was a city-sponsored event, you could be open till 11:30. Just tie it to the event itself.
Good morning, council, mayor. I think that part of the RFP, part of the idea behind it is to bring activity to downtown Benita Springs. The idea behind this, in our minds' eyes, this is a family establishment. We want to base it on Benita Springs' history. This is all part of, of the RFP, is to bring people downtown. We're not there to have a big, loud bar. We're not there to disrupt the community. We're in, in, for the public hearing, we're required to do studies for dust, glare, as well as noise. And in our RFP, we have also gone through expensive measures to ensure that we are not creating additional noise. The food trucks will not need noisy generators. We're going to have electric and propane at every single pad. So we're going through the measures to make sure that we're good neighbors and that we can weave this project into the fabric of Benita Springs. So if you're going to approve this project, it needs to be something that's going to draw people to the area and draw in more development. And that was the whole idea behind this. And so that's part of the idea, is getting something that's downtown, that's open a little bit longer, that serves the needs of the community.
Yes, I'd like to comment.
And if nobody shows up, they'll close. So it'll be driven by the demand of the market. And there is no, there are neighbors.
Can I have the floor once in a while? You asked me for, to speak, please.
Yes. Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. May I make a comment?
After I do. Thank you. You're requiring a liquor license. Is that true? If you don't get a liquor license, you're not going through with this deal, right?
We will, we will require a liquor license, and we will get a liquor license.
Can you tell me what time the park across the street closes?
Question, what time the park closes?
Yes.
My, my understanding is it closes at 10 o'clock.
I prefer 10 o'clock closing for the bar, too. Thank you.
To clarify, no, the Riverside Park closes at sunset, correct, Nicole? Unless it's, unless it's reserved for a special event, and then the operating hours of the park are in accordance with the, the hours of the event.
I didn't hear what you said, Arlene. Sorry. The, the park is open till sunset, sunrise to sunset? Sunrise to sunset, okay.
But, you know, if the public is there, they're there. But the official park hours is sunrise to sunset, unless there is a special event in the park that changes the hours of operation of that event occurring in the park.
Okay, so at sunset is the closing of the park, not 10 o'clock? Okay, so, uh, sunset is the closing of the park, not ten o'clock?
Our understanding was based on events like the Taste of Benita, the Blues Fest, and that sort of thing. Apologize for misunderstanding.
Yes, Jesse.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I, I think that the whole purpose of this RFP was to activate the downtown corridor, and, and I don't really feel that eleven-thirty is unreasonable. Furthermore, their financial projections are already based on this. To suggest it should only be during city events, to me, is not appropriate, because we only have, what, ten? So, they can be open till eleven-thirty, ten days, that's not in any way, shape, or form advantageous for us activating the corridor downtown, and it's not fair to them from a business side either, so. I, I think we just keep moving as we have been. Um, we've looked at this eighteen times, we've had, it went out for RFP, we studied it, it came back, we made a deal, uh, we've, we've gone through numerous, uh, iterations of this, and I think now we finally get to just sign. So, my, my suggestion is would be that we move forward, um, and, and just get this moving today, so, thank you.
I think we could-
Yes, Amy.
May I speak? I, uh, first of all, when this was brought, my discussions was that most of these details were gonna be worked out in a development agreement after we went through this buy and sales thing. And I do think that we could come to a, I'm not suggesting that we close at ten o'clock or five o'clock every single day, why can't we just have, uh, what I think is a more conventional timeframe, where you're open on the weekends till eleven-thirty or something, and that you're open anytime that there's a, a, a sponsored event where people will be down there anyway to stay till eleven-thirty? And during, during the week, you should close like at nine-thirty like they do at Celebration Park, because that's always been your model when we've discussed. Uh, so I don't think why, see why we have to do anything differently. And if you at least start out that way, you could always come forward and ask to have that revised, but I think going backwards is a lot harder, more difficult than going forwards. And you are in a residential area, there's all, there are people that live all around there, and we have to have, every time we have a zoning thing, we always say, what is compatibility with the rest of the neighborhood? So, um, and if it truly is a food truck, uh, family kind of thing, I can't see kids being out there at eleven-thirty anyway, except maybe on the weekends where they don't have to go to church, so, uh, I'm into school, and, um, so I suppose that we have some kind of a compromise position, where you get your eleven-thirty for most of the active time down there, do nine-thirty, if you, if there's, if there's an event, then you can stay till eleven-thirty, and we'll see how it goes.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, if, I can just add a little bit more to the process. So, when, when this goes forward, we get to the special exception, that will set the final hours of operation, and that, that, that will be as requested by the Magnuses, but also in conjunction with community development review, so they'll, they'll review it for compatibility, for noise, there'll be conditions with respect to sound systems, to compliance with the, the city's noise code, to live music, there, there will be a number of additional conditions that will come out of that process. Um, the only reason I highlighted the hours for this, this, this point is that it is something that is going to be negotiated. Now, ultimately, if the city council doesn't adopt the special exception, which, then the entire deal unwinds. So, I, I wanna make, make it clear that there will be further conversation on it, but, you know, the final determination will be really worked out between the Magnuses and staff, and then come to you, as you pointed out, there, these details will be flushed out, but if there are consider, concerns that the council has, I think everyone just, you know, should be transparent and know what they are now, so that we're not negotiating bad faith moving forward.
Thank you, Derek.
Uh, yes, uh, and you have nine food trucks, are, we have nine liquor licenses? Where's the liquor gonna be served? Anywhere?
In the RFP, the liquor will be served from the two-story structure. The food trucks will not be allowed to sell beverages of any kind.
And if your, and if your customers wander across the street into the park after dark, they're gonna be arrested? With alcohol, open container?
The liquor license will require us to perform functions to keep the liquor on site.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, in the, I know the food trucks are not gonna have amplification of music, will the tiki hut or the, uh, the two-story bar, will it, would have out, have music that would be amplified, I would suppose?
For the RFP, the two-story structure, which we will own, will have control over any sort of music or volume or anything for, you know, for the atmosphere, for the pleasure, for, for the pleasure of the whole park.
I, 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 oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, thank you.
I have one more point, uh, that I would like the council to think about, and that is, um, in this development agreement, in this thing that we're asked to vote on today, is the notion that, uh, they have access to the Banyan Tree Lot, and I don't believe that we had, we had spent enough time talking about that, because that particular lot had previously by council been slated for certain plans. So I don't mind their using it, but I don't want it to interfere with the, the prior plans that council had, um, and I, I'd like to just remove it as a, as, as a, as a guarantee that, that they have access to it, because we haven't, as a council, really explored what we want for that lot.
What is the, wait, what is the request?
They wanna use it for parking.
No, 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 I, I, may I clarify, this, this was, there was discussion about this at the original RFP response and the LOI. It is not requested for their parking or for their calculations. It was a, it was a offer to make an additional improved parking area in the downtown, um, because there's more downtown parking requests, I, I believe that's my, my understanding. It's not a requirement, they're willing to drop the Banyan Tree from consideration.
Well, I don't mind that we, we might, they might find that they need it in the future, but I don't want it to be, it's, it's put in here as if it were a requirement. That's the way I read it, I don't like that.
Amy, you can remove that, uh, as far as a require, uh, from this, uh, from this development agreement altogether.
Okay.
We do not require it, and we are not, we do not need it for parking, for, for-
Well, that's what I thought, so I don't know, why, why is it in here? That's my question of Derek.
Well, because this, this conversation came, came up at the LOI discussion, and the council voted to move forward with consideration of Banyan Tree. We did know that it was, that there were concerns about it, and so we broke it out specially within the development agreement, so that it could just be dropped. Now, the Lemon Tree Lot is required for their parking, it, they will have non-exclusive use to it, so it'll be a, it'll be a public parking lot in all senses. Uh, I was made aware that the, that the Lions Club uses that parking lot for their, um, Wednesday Farmer's Market, the, the Magnuses are aware of that, and, and they had identified in their RFP that they're aware of it. There's no concern, concern about conflicts of use there, we can, we can add provisions for, for that use, but because they are also expending a considerable amount of money improving that lot, uh, that non-exclusive use is good for at least ten years, at which point the city can convert the property for another use, but we have to identify alternate public parking that they could use, otherwise their special exception would have insufficient parking.
Correct.
So that, those are the parking terms of the agreement, uh-
But it, I, I would prefer if we took out the Banyan Lot, and that we, as a council, should look at that for a potential development according to what our vision is for the downtown. And that, that had been part of our discussion a year or two ago, and I, that's why I don't wanna just stick it in there right now.
And, and if we take that out, can we call the question?
Mm-hmm, sure.
If we take, if we take that out, can we call the question?
Well, I, I just wanted to, uh, talk about both the, the time and, and the additional parking. Um, that section of the Banyan Tree was gonna be used by the library for parking, um, so I, I don't see why we wouldn't let them, uh, improve it and have extra parking for downtown, because it would be for anybody to use, and if we decide later to do anything, it's, it's our property, they, they have no claim to it, so we can change it at any time.
See, I concur with Mike. I mean, it's their money they're developing, it's still our property.
Yeah.
I mean, of course they're saying, you don't want us to do it, we won't do it.
So-
But, that, that might be-
If, if I can continue, you know, that, that's my feelings on the Banyan Tree, I, I don't see, I, I think it's a win-win, because we, we get additional parking for the time being, and then anytime that we do wanna do something different, we can change it. Um, as far as the time, um, I, I know there's gonna be restrictions on noise after a certain time, but I, I don't see why we would limit them from being open that late if they wanted to, because we don't limit restaurants from being, being open that late, and other bars are open till two A.M. Um, and I, I've gotten tacos, you know, down on Old Forty-One after midnight, you know, I think even after two o'clock, um, no alcohol, but tacos. Um, so I mean, I, there may not be a huge draw for food that late, right now, um, but that's what we're trying to get, we're trying to get a bigger draw downtown, to get more of a nightlife down there. And, and I mean, not like a two A.M. nightlife with clubs and stuff, but, you know, reasonable family, you know, venues like that, and, um, you know, it, it, I guess it's my parenting style, but, uh, um, my, my kids are often up, you know, eleven-thirty, twelve o'clock at night, um, we're, we're a very late family, you know, on our days off, we sleep in, so, um, it's, it's not uncommon for my kids to be up at eleven-thirty at night eating, eating dinner, so.
Right. Mr. Mayor? Couple, couple points on the Banyan Tree site, uh, if it, uh, if we do anything there, I wanna make sure that we provide something that keeps any parking, any paving, anything from getting within ten feet of the cover of that Banyan Tree, because if you get hard surfaces in where the cover is, that, that'll start killing the tree, and any kind of, I don't, even temporary traffic going under that tree, anything, that's, that's the man, other than that, I agree with Mike on, on that. On the hours, I think the least that I would wanna see is that at some hour, it might be nine-thirty, or it might be nine, that the volume is cranked down, because music, even though it's nice to listen to, if you wanna listen to it, it's one of those things like a barking dog, that if you're being forced to listen to music that you, you don't wanna listen to, it's a nuisance, it wouldn't interfere with the operation of the bar. If anybody's gonna be there at, uh, say after nine-thirty, they're more into the drinking and talking to somebody and, and all that, I don't think that would be a, a huge thing, but that's just a thought, anyway.
Um, and I just wanted to clarify that, um, the Banyan Tree Lot, I, I was talking about what was previously identified by the library, just the southeast corner-
Yeah.
And not the entire lot.
And that's the only part that's identified here.
Only, only thing I'm concerned about, once, if we do any improvements, then on a big event, there's gonna be a tendency of overflow parking creeping out in non-paved areas, and we just need to make sure that that can't get under the Banyan Tree.
We, if, should the Banyan Tree be included, and again, it's, it's only optional, if, if that occurs, we can, we can put a provision in that the parking improvement plan will be mutually agreed upon by the city, so that city staff can identify in a way that it's, it doesn't overflow unnecessarily or cause damage to the tree.
Yeah.
That's, that's all something that can be worked out in the details.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Chris?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I, uh, support Mike and his comments. I think if we look back at what we're trying to do, we're trying to attract people downtown. We had a difficulty with getting anybody interested in developing bamboo, uh, we had one proposal, which we rejected, and I think the, the whole purpose of, uh, my support of, of the food truck park was to try to get people downtown. Uh, if we get people, enough people coming downtown, then I think we have a chance of having a successful development of the, of the bamboo area. I'm not troubled with the eleven-thirty time, I think the market, people, you know, the people will adjust to the time, in the summertime, you know, it really doesn't get dark till after nine o'clock, so, uh, I, I think, you know, this time of year gets darker a lot earlier, but I think we have sufficient protections built into our noise ordinances, our, uh, code enforcement procedures and so forth. You know, we, we, we ought to be looking at this as a partnership between ourselves and the Magnus family in terms of developing this, this park, and, uh, I think, I think Mike, Mike raises a good point. We don't seem to regulate other bars and restaurants in the downtown area. I doubt that Buffalo Chips closes much before midnight, I'm never there at midnight, but I can't imagine that it does. So, you know, less, I, I don't think this is really a big deal, uh, and I'm for going ahead and approving this, uh, this development plan. Uh, yes, uh, you're looking at nine food trucks and another building?
There's eight food trucks.
Eight food trucks, okay. Uh, so potentially you got, are they gonna, uh, question number one, are they there twenty-four seven? Are they gonna be parked there permanently, or do they come and go? The second question is, how many people are gonna be working in your rooftop restaurant? How many employees do you anticipate? If I got eight food trucks, that's eight people, let's say eight cars, and the people that work in the restaurant, that's another group. Uh, my experience at down on the beach, at, uh, Doc's Beach House must have twenty or twenty-five employees, and they fill up the public parking lot to the north of their building. Uh, they, the county issues annual passes, so they have a place to park, they fill that up with all their employees, and the public has no use of that problem. Uh, you, you're building, what, eight parking spots on your property? I believe?
Yes.
Um, I'm just worried about a, one single business filling up all the public parking spots.
And bike racks.
Yep.
What's that?
Bike racks also.
I, you didn't have the floor, and what did you say?
They also have bicycle racks for folks who are biking, it's a really big thing downtown, and walking is a big thing downtown, too.
I'm sorry, but we're talking about parking spaces, public parking spaces, you know, the people walk around and stuff.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, if you didn't see the connection.
You are, sorry, okay.
I am.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Yes.
The, uh, uh, the, we are within the code of what is required for parking, uh, and I could have John, if you'd like, John, I think could come up and explain that, helpful.
Yes, John, would you please, uh, you have eight parking spots, is that what I said? I saw on the, what are we even doing?
Morning. When you recently adopted the changes to the food truck parks and the food truck, uh, ordinance, you did adopt parking standards for food truck parks. So what they are proposing is consistent with that standard. It includes not only the spaces they're building, right, adjacent to their property, but also includes the spaces that are gonna be constructed on the Lemon Tree Lot. So between both of those parking improvements, they will meet the minimum standard.
Any other comments? Do we have to vote on this?
Yes.
Uh, yes, you be, today, uh, just to clarify, you're, today you are approving the purchase and sale agreement, the other items, including development agreement, will get worked out as the special exception moves forward, and the final adoption of the development agreement, the special exception, and the final ordinance will all be at a future meeting.
Motion to approve, as is.
Second. Any other comments? You're not, you're gonna have the floor.
So, the motion is?
The motion was to approve the purchase and sale agreement.
Thank you.
Approve, uh- Roll call.
Roll call.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank, uh, Mayor and Council.
Thank you.
And staff, and, uh, and, uh, community development, we appreciate all your help throughout the process, and, uh, we will do this as quickly as we can.
Thank you.
Okay, city manager, rental on the cottages?
Yes, thank you Mayor and Council. At this time, I'd like Nicole Perino to come forward, um, she has the current, the current, uh, rental agreements, the rate schedule. As you are aware, we, we, uh, took an opportunity to pause on the rent requirements for the cottages during the closure of the park, and, and we'd said that we'd bring it back to discuss once, uh, special events were occurring. Uh, we are now permitting special events within the parks, we wanted to receive some additional direction, Nicole's gonna lead the discussion.
Thank you, Nicole Perino, Parks and Recreation Director.
Thank you. Nicole Perino, Parks and Recreation Director. And, um, as, as Arlene stated, in April, we did put a hold on rental agreements or rental payments for all the art, all of the artist cottages. And it was brought up that, at that time, once the park was ready for rentals and events, that we would come back to you and have a discussion on reinstating those, uh, monthly payments. It was brought up last night in the Art and Public Places Board. They are in favor of reinstating at this time due to events, uh, being back in the downtown park. As well as, I have spoken with, um, Mr. Pino, who was the original person to send the correspondence to you, he's, he also agrees that it is time, um, to start back up with rental payments because they are picking up and getting much busier. Uh, it, the amount that each cottage pays is a little different based on the term of when they began. Because we did do an increase last, it was in two thousand nineteen. So, we have three cottages that pay the old rental rate of two hundred and fifty a month during season and a hundred and fifty a month in the three months of summer. And then some of the cottages pay, the other three pay the three hundred dollars a month during season and two hundred. So, we are in a, they, it, there is a mix right now just because of the way their terms of their agreements are. The ones that pay the lower amounts, they're in usually their last year of their, of their term. Um, the other three, it would be in a new, a new lease. So, they knew of that when they did the RFP. So, that's the difference in rental rates. It's, I know it's a little confusing, but it's just based on, uh, when they, uh, got an agreement for the cottage.
So, Nicole, they are, they are open and they've been operating and they're not paying any rent at the current time and haven't since April?
Correct.
And it's time to start? And if they don't want to?
Can you ask me for permission to speak? God, you're hard to teach. Yes, ma'am?
Yes, they are, they, they were not paying rents, um, currently.
So, hardship is probably over with. I, I prefer they have some skin in the game that they need to hustle a little bit in order to, to keep their business survival. Uh, all cottages are filled up? Some of them for many years now?
Yes.
So, uh, and what your suggestion is to start rent payments in February, is that?
Mayor, Mayor and Council, we're, we're looking for direction, as, as this was a voted item last time, we're looking for your direction of whether you'd like us to re-implement the, the rental rates under their, their current terms.
I would make a motion that we reinstitute rent on the artist cottages.
Second.
Any other comment? Roll call, please.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Mayor, Mayor, before we move on, you mind if I, I make a recommendation? Today, today's meeting, the, the hearing and the acoustics are, seem to be a little bit worse than, than normal. Uh, perhaps to keep, keep the flow of the meeting, when, when, when we have an agenda item come up, perhaps we save all comments until the end of the, the presentation and then go through each member, uh, and ending, ending probably with the mayor, adding their comments. That way, we don't, we're, because I see a lot of people missing each other. I see people jumping in and out. I think that'd just make everything a little bit easier. Um, if we go down the line each, each time when it comes to comments and, and discussion because
Could I make a?
It seems worse than normal today.
Mr. Mayor, could I make a piggyback on that?
Yes, sir.
I think what Derek is proposing is good, but I'd like to see we rotate between starting with District One and District Six so that we don't always have, because a lot of times by the time it gets to this end of the table, everything's been talked about.
Okay, Fred, that's for sure.
I don't know, I don't know if I agree with that.
Yes, Chris.
Uh, one thing I, that would be helpful to me in these presentations we have as well where they're showing up on the screen, uh, if somebody's going to bring in a PowerPoint or other, uh, uh, media to, uh, to take a look at it, if they could have copies of it made so that we can sit here and read what's on the screen. Because personally, I can't read it and it would be helpful. It will also give us something that we could take with us if we would like to refer to it. So, uh, I appreciate the, uh, the presentation by code enforcement. I would have just liked to have copies of the slides so that I could follow along. So, maybe we could do that in the future as well.
May I just, and I, I think we can, maybe at our, um, workshop that we have next week, we could talk about a process so that we can get our comments out to everybody. But something that I think worked pretty well in other forums is that when, uh, a motion is on the floor, that the mayor, the, the leader of the, um, committee doesn't say anything, but he asks everybody, "Does anybody want to comment?" And at that time, anybody that wants to comment could raise their hand. So, the mayor knows that there are comments and who's going to comment. So, then if you would just call us in whatever order you want, and then after we have our piece, then the mayor tends to have his piece because he kind of summarizes the thinking of the council. I've seen that work pretty well at the, uh, county commissioners. But again, we could talk about procedure at our, at our workshop coming in the, in February. Because with the hardship of being in a place where we can't hear each other, it causes difficulty. But that would be my suggestion.
Uh, I forgot to ask if anybody needs a recess.
Well, we're almost done.
Anybody, if, if you need a recess, you know, if you feel like we need a recess, you ask and we, we can recess at any time. Uh,
Almost, almost.
It doesn't have to be a scheduled time, I don't think, on the, uh, agenda that we, we take a break. Uh, are we all right now?
We're, we're almost done.
Finish up? Okay, now we got the COVID-19 update?
Yes, Mayor and Council. We, we just wanted to advise that, um, we are still communicating the messages, Laura said earlier, from Lee County. There is a, uh, a help phone number from the state vendor, which is eight-eight-eight-four-nine-nine-zero-eight-five-one. We're going to publish that information as well on our website. Um, as of this morning, all of the , uh, new Lee County Health Department vaccines have been, uh, fifty-eight hundred. Appointments have been filled this morning within minutes. Um, and our governor did announce yesterday that there are several Publix locations that will now be available to make appointments. Um, and you would visit the Publix, uh, website at publix.com backslash COVID slash vaccine. And I understand that all of those were filled this morning within minutes as well. Um, we, we do luckily know that four locations within Benita Springs Publix will be offering the vaccine. Again, the only way to, uh, register for that is on the online portal. There is no phone number, uh, to make, to make that reservation. Uh, but we do have, uh, four locations in Benita Springs that are available to us. Um, and we'll have those on our website available as well. Additionally, any other information that Lee County can be helpful is to dial the two-one-one and they'll be able to get you to any resources that you may need. Um, the only other announcement that I had that I wanted to make is, uh, Matt has maybe aware that there is going to be a detour this week, um, on I-75 by, um, Corkscrew Road, one, uh, I was at one-twenty-three, which will affect Imperial Parkway in the evenings. We sent out an email yesterday, but I want to make sure the public was aware and we'll make sure that information is available on our website as well. And the only other item we'll be coming back to you on is, um, spring break for Lee County this year is March fifteenth through the nineteenth. We have rescheduled our LPA meeting and zoning board meeting, uh, to the week of the twenty-second. Uh, our normal city council meeting would be on the seventeenth. Um, this room that week will be utilized by our, by our children and our community. So, we may be coming back to you to, to reschedule potentially to, um, March twenty-fourth, which is a Wednesday, so that they can be here in the, in the gym for the spring break. But we'll, we'll get with each of you individually and see, but just to make the public aware, may be looking to reschedule the March seventeenth meeting because, uh, we want to provide that opportunity for the children to be in the gym.
Thank you. Okay, Mayor and Council reports. Amy, would you like to start?
Um, yes, I, I thank you, Mayor. Um, I'd like to report, and as I'm sure you recall, that you tasked me with following up on the Bill, Big Carlos Bridge replacement. And Arlene was a great help. And we have contacted, um, Fort Myers and I have personally spoke with the mayor, uh, Ray Murphy there. And Arlene has spoken to the manager at, uh, Fort Myers Beach. Uh, we all, and Arlene could jump in, but she made, she attempted to make a contact with the Friends of Lover's Key and we haven't, uh, ha, been able to, uh, complete that contact. But I do want to report that in an extensive conversation I had with Mayor Ray Murphy, that he personally is very much in favor in, um, having some kind of a communication from, uh, Fort Myers Beach and Benita Springs to the Lee County Commissioners, saying that we are not in favor of the recommended alternative, which is the sixty-foot fixed span bridge. Um, and, uh, I, he, he, their, their meeting was held on, their, uh, council meeting was held on Tuesday, but he had to go to a doctor's appointment. He wasn't able to complete that conversation with their board. But there was another meeting on Thursday where, um, Arlene is in touch with him and the manager. So, we could communicate that way. So, I would like to get some direction from the council that we could collaborate on the theme of what we're going to say. And if we actually agree that that's what we want to do, and, and then we'd have to, uh, get the, a copy of a draft letter to you in between meetings and we just have an authorization for the mayor to sign it. I think that's where we are, Arlene, unless you propose a different policy.
Correct. Um, the, the mayor of, uh, Fort Myers Beach, unfortunately, uh, uh, he had to leave his meeting early. He, he, uh, was attending, uh, Mayor Joe Covelli's services. So, he was planning on bringing up the item under his council member items. But they do have a director's meeting tomorrow. And from what I understand is they can give adequate direction to their manager to collaborate on a letter if, if they would, if we wish to do so together. Um, the, the motion that we would need today is if you would like that to happen, we would authorize Councilwoman Corumba to initiate the draft and then you'd be authorizing the mayor to sign, to sign the letter on behalf of the council.
And, and I have a couple of more things to add. I did speak with Ray Sandelli, County Commissioner from our district, um, because I thought it was, uh, important that he didn't be blindsided by any letter that comes. He was very receptive in the sense that he said he was willing to listen to us. He did remark that, um, you know, this, um, analysis came up when Larry Keiker was still on the council. So, he came in between the decision-making. He did vote in favor of it when it came before the council, but he was willing to listen to us as he always is. Uh, and I, I'm happy that I approached him because he, he is expecting of the likelihood that there would be a letter coming from our city. And if you want, I wrote down a few points that I thought I might include in the letter. And if you have some time, I'd just like to read them to you, if that's okay. Uh, so, the concerns that, uh, I would like to put in the letter, and if you don't like any of these, I'll just eliminate it, is that, that the context-sensitive incompatibility with, with the Benita Plan and the vision for the city would be one. The conflict with Lover's Key and neighboring existing residential community entrances. Environmental concerns about dredging to accommodate the relocation of the a, apex of the bridge. Wildlife stress because of potential facilitating larger boats with, uh, the higher span. Um, a review of the costs using more conventional present value versus future value. And a concern about the view corridor impact for existing residential communities. So, if there's anything that you don't like, let me know. And if there's anything you want to add, let me know. And then I will get a draft as soon as I can, if you all agree to it.
A question?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Are, are you proposing that you draft it and then you work with Arlene and then basically, once that letter's polished there and to give to the mayor and he doesn't object, it's going to be signed and sent?
Yes.
I, I have a little trouble with that in process. You're basically asking all of us to agree to a letter that we haven't seen going out with a signature.
Well, we would, we would circulate them to you. I mean, you have, you have, I, I just wanted to get a head start so you wouldn't have to have too many.
Okay.
We would, the staff would circulate the letter as a draft and then you would, you would contact staff.
Staff. So, what, once the draft goes out, you, you talk to Arlene and she'll fix it up.
Mr. Mayor, uh, just for clarification, are we talking, I like what she was saying about doing it in conjunction with Fort Myers Beach, but is that, um, I should ask you actually, is that, um, is this letter going to be the same letter that they send?
If you can get a microphone, please.
So, is this going to be the same letter or is this going to be, are, are we're going to do one and they're going to do one?
Because of the timing, I think we're each going to do one, but we're, we're going to assure that a letter is going out by both, uh, Fort Myers. We, we don't want to do it alone and they don't want to do it alone.
Okay, got you.
All right. So, because we don't have control of what they write. It's, this is what we're going to say, but they're going to say, "We're definitely sending a letter and we're saying we're definitely sending a letter." And if it is, we're, is, is the fact that we're not sending a letter, then neither of us are sending a letter.
No, perfect.
Correct. We would be hearing back from, I, I will be hearing back from the, uh, town manager of Fort Myers Beach on their decision on Thursday and communicate that with Amy and we could communicate with council.
Because the public hearing is on the twenty-eighth. That's why we have to do it this way because it all came up at the sort of last minute and we didn't have enough meetings and, and we had to do outreach and all this other thing. So, it's a little awkward, but if you, if the sense of the council is you want to do this, this is the only way we could do it.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor, may I speak?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. Didn't want to get yelled at again.
No, don't go ask. Go ahead.
Excuse me? Excuse me?
I didn't say anything.
I didn't hear anything.
Don't be an ass.
Oh, wow.
Okay, um, I went to, um, a Florida Department of Transportation meeting and I ran into some folks from MPO and were basically barking at the moon. But if you guys want to go ahead and get on the record, okay. But
We, we understand that.
And, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, moving on.
To that end, I would say that it's our job to bark. I mean, even if it's not going to be the right way, I think the citizens would expect that we're going to at least try to fight. And if we're going to do it in conjunction with Fort Myers Beach, you know, it's a lot harder for Lee County to put something on two cities who both say they don't want it. So, it might be barking, but it might actually get something done. But, I mean, doing nothing at all, I don't think the citizens would expect that. When I talked to Sandelli the other day, I told him that, I was like, you know, "I think you knowing me would expect me to say something on behalf of Benita." So, whether, whether you, you guys as a body are with us or not, you know, don't be surprised when you hear from us. Because that's what our citizens would expect. So,
Well, I also know that we have to work with FODA and MPO and we don't want, they're the ones that control
But the, the problem with that, with that mindset is there's so many pieces. They're professionals. They're not going to, you know, they're not going to hold us, hold against us that we don't want this monstrosity coming into our city on something else. Uh, hopefully, if they're professionals. But, that's my view.
Okay, can I have the floor?
Absolutely. Go ahead.
Um, my opinion that I have contacted Sandelli and made some other contacts, I would prefer that every individual councilperson and the mayor make their own comments to Sandelli, who has the ultimate say about this high-rise bridge. Rather than trying to communicate one, one letter from the seven of us that they concern, oh, we'll just throw this one letter away. If we have seven different people beating on their door, I think it'd be as efficient. We could also have a letter from the city saying unanimously, and that's what I told, uh, Ray Sandelli, unanimously, unanimously disapprove of this. Um, there's a public meeting on the twenty-eighth and Amy and I were both at that two years ago. And they had, basically said, "Don't bother, don't bother. We decided we're going to have this high-rise." Uh, John Pino, he's written, uh, I've got an email from him. I asked him to send that to, to Ray Sandelli. So, you know, they, eventually they, I think they wanted to make an intercoastal waterway out of, out of the sterile bay. If they moved the bridge, the apex further to the south into the Benita. If they moved the bridge, the apex further to the south into the Benita, they're gonna have to dredge, dredge under the bridge. The ecology of the whole thing, uh, I wish everybody, all the councilmen and all the people that want, that don't want this, to contact Ray Sandelli and, uh, Mayor, Mayor Murphy of, of Fort Myers Beach, uh, to, to voice their concern. We, we represent the people, you know, if the people don't want this, we better let our representatives know. So that's my comment. The Homeowners Association President Stanley something or other from Lover's Key, there's a couple buildings there, he has written to me, uh, and I asked him to send it to the Com- Commissioners, they're against, they're against the high-rise bridge. I don't know anybody that's in favor, except for Larry Keiker, and he's in heaven supposedly. So, uh, individually, contact whoever you wanna contact, and tell them you don't want this high-rise bridge. Amy, on the twenty-eighth, they're having another, another meeting, uh, I'm taught, I, I don't know whether to go to that, or go to the, uh, Historic Preservation Board meeting at the same time. Were you planning on attending that?
Um, I, I, I haven't...
And, Mr. Mayor, I can do the historic preservation, cause I think your presence at the, uh, bridge would be much more productive and useful for our city. And I could do the historic this week, this month.
Huh?
I could do the historic preservation meeting this month, and you could do the bridge.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that.
Yeah, I, I have to check, I'm not sure about that, but I'll check what time it is and everything.
Okay, well, if Laura's gonna take care of Historic Presi- uh, Preservation League for me, uh, on the twenty-eighth, yeah, I'd definitely be at the...
That would be good, and I, I appreciate...
At six o'clock, I believe.
I, I don't know the time, that's why I'm not sure. Uh, but, um, but if, if I can, I will go also to support your effort there. And I do agree that, you know, I still think we should send a letter from the council, if that's the council's pleasure, and I do, I will personally try to send a personal letter, uh, I will send mine to Kevin Ruane, who's the chairman of that board.
Yes.
Um, and, um, and I do think if we can, but it's up to everybody to do that if they want it.
Yeah, I, I think more the mayor, you know, we can send a letter from the city, unanimous, we're already unanimous on that, and the individual councilpeople and the mayor, I, I keep on it, and maybe we can win this one for the city.
So, to be clear, Mr. Mayor, you want Amy to do an overall letter for the council, and then each of us do our own letter?
Do your own phone calls, do your own emails, do whatever you wanna do, do what you can do, don't depend on other people. If you don't want this, if you don't want this bridge...
I didn't say, Mr. Mayor, I was just asking for clarification, is Amy to do an overall letter for the council? Cause like somehow that got lost in the conversation, sorry.
I don't know if I'm gonna agree with Amy's letter. See?
Right.
I'm saying individually bombard our elected officials, and we'll have a, a letter from the city saying the same thing.
Okay, okay, that's the letter from the city I'm talking about, is Amy to compose that?
Yes, that's been decided, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I, I will work with Arlene, and I'll get something to everybody as soon as I can in the next couple of days, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for supporting this.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Couple, couple points, I agree with your approach. I want, I think it's important, I was gonna ask Arlene if this has come out, at the discussion we had where we got into this, it was stated that one of the reasons we didn't want this bridge is because it was gonna be a four-lane bridge. Have we clarified, it's gonna, I think it's gonna be a two-lane bridge with two bicycle lanes? That is, which, which is right?
Correct, I understand it's a two-lane bridge with bicycles.
Yes, that's my understanding too.
Okay, good. And then, and then on the dredging, the dredging will be approved by what, the Corps of Engineers? If they do build, build the other bridge we don't want?
I would requ- I would require whatever state and federal permitting would be required, I'm sure, being the waterways would require both, both, both entities.
Good, okay, fine.
Okay, Fred, any more comments, uh, co- Mayor and Council, uh, reports?
Oh, yeah, yes, sir, um, Mr. Mayor, uh, I wanna report on what's going on at the moment, and it's very, very preliminary. At the moment, there's only about four hundred bills filed up at Tallahassee for the beginning of the session. Last year, I was reminded of this yesterday, there was thirty-five hundred bills filed, and, and the point was made, how many of them passed, what's the most important part of their job is to stop bad bills, but only two-fifty of the thirty-five hundred got passed, but in the two-fifty, there would be a number of them that would be what you call invasive of, uh, local home rule rights. Now this year, the Florida Lake of Cities is going to expect me, when they have an alert, to get the word out, and we gotta e-blast it out to the citizens, so that if they object, they can write emails to the state legislative body, letting them know what the pulse of the voters is on that. Some of the hot topics, it's coming up again, short-term vacation rentals, that's gonna be a hot topic, there's other topics, some of them are on, uh, some anti-gun laws, and there are both sides on that, but there'll be a lot of, a lot of hot topics coming in, they'll be fast and furious, and that's, but I want you to know that they would like me to be able to get the public involved, and the only way we can do that is just put out information for the public and let them make their decision, I think. Thank you.
Uh, yes, uh, Mike, comment?
I'm good.
You're good? Chris?
I'm good.
Yeah, Jesse?
Yes, uh, really quickly, I wanted to give a, a big shout-out to Love Inc., uh, the Springs of Benita Church, and Arlene. Uh, there was a family in Imperial Benita Estates, uh, which is District Two, uh, that had, you know, really great folks and, and very, very bad circumstances, um, who should not have been, and Arlene really, uh, helped ferret this thing all the way through with Love Inc., and we got a number of, uh, you know, builders from around the community to come together and really circle around this family, so, um, it wouldn't have happened without Arlene, it wouldn't have happened without Love Inc., and, and Pastor Wynn over at the Springs, so I just wanted to say thank you honestly, um, you know, it's one small act of many that you all do, but these type of things, we, we really made a difference on some people who really needed it, so I appreciate that.
Thank you for sharing.
And also last, prayers to Mayor Covelli, I spoke to his wife Diane, uh, the other day, and, you know, passed on my condolences, and additionally, uh, please keep your prayers with Sheriff Carmen Marcino, um, on the passing of the major of his family, his grandmother. I was at that funeral this week as well, so, you know, please keep both those families in your prayers, uh, they're, they're great folks, and they do a lot of good work for our community, so now if we can lift them up, be a great time. Thanks.
Okay.
Myself?
Laura, please.
Okay, thank you. Well, I wanna say thanks to our President, uh, Trump, for the last, and his family, for the last four years. I thank him for the wonderful economy pre-COVID, the lowest unemployment for everyone, white, black, yellow, green, blue, purple, for supporting our men and women in law enforcement and armed services, and mostly because he made it cool to think America's great. So, thank you, Donald Trump, and I'm gonna miss ya. God bless America, God bless Benita Springs, thank you.
Well, thank you, Laura. Well, let's see. Uh-oh, got too close to the microphone. I think we've about covered everything.
Approval of the minutes?
I'm still doing my comment period, thank you. Yeah, so, uh, approval of the minutes, do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Thank you.
I have, I have a comment on, uh, the...
Yes.
Did you get my message? On, um, the minutes from, oh, the sixth of January. There's a confusion on page four, because the motion failed, and it was five-two, but yet it states unanimous, so if you could just review that, thank you.
Thank you, Laura, I think I mentioned, I noticed that too. Any other, a public comment, do we have any public left? Seeing none, uh, do we have any other business come before the city?
We're gonna vote on the minutes?
We're gonna vote.
Oh, we gotta vote on the minutes, okay.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilman Pardon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Clark?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Okay, any other business before the city?
Yeah, I've got a point.
Yes, sir.
I think we need to get something in a ordinance or something that says that if the minutes say one thing, but the video or the tape of the meeting is contrary to that, the video and the tape is the record, because there have been cases in the past where we've not had something in the minutes, but it's been in the, in the video, and that really, the video is the best record, cause that covers what the motion says precisely, what the vote was, all of that, so I think that could be easily clarified by something that Derek could come up with.
I think that's what Debbie does now, is she...
Pardon?
I think that's what Debbie does now, is she goes back and she takes that section in the video.
No, 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 I've seen things that we missed, and, and, and some of them are pretty big things, so I'm saying, you need to do that, and we need to make sure we're doing the same thing on the, on the, uh...
Pointing that when you say?
It's, it's a record.
Let me have the floor?
Yes, sir.
Let me have the floor. We have an opportunity to correct the minutes every meeting, I think that's sufficient. Is there anything else before the city? We're adjourned, thank you.